Never mind, we were just kidding. Just kidding. And while they're doing that, if everybody will just look at the rules on the back of your little sheet, please turn your cell phones off, and other than that, that's it. And speak directly into the microphone, give us your name and your address.
And speaking directly into the microphone goes for the commissioners as well, because it's very difficult to do minutes when I can't hear you.
Yeah, Mr. Foster, she was talking, yeah.
Thanks. Blasco? Chambers? Foster? Phillips? Pierce?
Here.
Robinson? Wallace?
Present.
And Chairman White?
Here.
Move to excuse those not present?
Motion a second, all in favor, aye? All opposed? Has everybody had a chance to look through the minutes?
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Alright, it passed. Alright, so we've done, is there any administration today, Sean or Donna? Okay. Alright, so the first case is SU 2025-16, 1307 West 47th Street. A special use to allow a in-home daycare. Is the applicant here? Would you come to the microphone, please? State your name and address.
Tina Gibbs, 1307 West 47th Street, North Little Rock, Arkansas, 72118.
And your first name again?
Tina Gibbs.
Thank you. And Tina, tell me what you would like to do.
I would like to open up my home to five to seven kids. I was going ahead and get licensed so that if it goes up to the 10, I will have that coding already done.
Okay. And you live at this residence?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have any questions from any of the commissioners? Do we have any questions or concerns from the audience?
Move for approval.
We have a move for approval, we have a second, and would you please call the roll?
Thanks.
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
And Chairman White?
Yes. It did pass, and if you would just get with Donna, then she'll tell you what to do next.
Alright.
Okay, just call.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you, have a nice day. Alright, second item is a special use, 2025-17, to request a special use to allow an event center in a C6 zoning district. Is the applicant here? And would you state your name and address?
My name is Molly Serna, and the business address is 115 West Broadway.
And your home address?
6901 Bluebird Drive, Little Rock.
Thank you very much. And what are you wanting to do?
I am seeking to turn that adorable little house on Broadway into a tea party event center for kids and adults.
Okay. And what would your hours of operation be?
That is going to depend on the client itself, but it's a kid geared business, and so that crash time will be by nine o'clock each night. And Flyaway is my neighbor, and I'm very much going to check the schedule and make sure we are not impeding anything happening around that the kids would need to be away from, an event like Flyaway.
Right. Alright, do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, ma'am. I would think Flyaway would be the least of your worries, because if the arena and the ballpark are having an event, I hope you have private parking on your, on your property, because it's hard to come by.
Yes, sir, there is private parking and garages, and we've done the math, and we can fit almost 11 cars on that lot itself. It's a over two square foot, 2,000 square foot house, it's a lot more than it looks like. We're also next to that parking lot, and I've been down here and traveled before I leased it during events at the arena and the ballpark to see what the parking would be like and how safe it would be for the kids to get to and pro, and yes, that will be considered too. If there's a giant North Little Rock graduation, then we may not schedule a party for that time.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments from the commissioners? Do we have any comments from the audience? Do we have a motion?
Please, no problem, move for approval.
Have a motion and a second, would you please call the roll?
Thanks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
And Chairman White?
Yes. It did pass, if you'll just give her a call tomorrow, she'll get you fixed up. Alright. Item number three, special use is 2025-19. A special use to allow a placement of a greenhouse structure on the property in a C3 zoning district. And the address is 4801 North Shore Drive in North Little Rock. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Your name and address?
My name is Trey Rosenbaum, and my home address is 1422 Kings Mountain Drive in Little Rock, Arkansas, 72211.
Alright, tell us what you would like to do.
Yes, I'm wanting to open some ornamental greenhouses on some family-owned property behind that office park, and I'm wanting to grow flowers, vegetables, hanging baskets, perennials for sale to local garden centers in central Arkansas.
And have you read all the conditions to consider?
Yes, sir, I have.
And you are good with it?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Alright, do we have any comments from the commissioners, Mr. Chambers?
Just, just a comment, I'm in the business, what will your business be called?
My business will be called Natural State Land Consulting, and we'll have a DBA as Natural State Nurseries.
I saw that, I just didn't know what his flower business was going to be called.
Yes, sir, Natural, Natural State Land Consulting, and then we'll have a DBA as Natural State Nurseries.
Nurseries, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any comments from any of the other commissioners?
Oh, how many greenhouses?
The initial permit that I'm applying, or that I'm asking for is, it's, it's eight to start with, but I will not start with that many, because I'll be restricted based on funds.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any comments from the audience? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
They have a motion, seconds, would you please call the roll?
Thanks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
And Chairman White?
Yes. Thank you very much, it passed, if you'll just get with her tomorrow.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. This is item number four, rezon 2523, rezoning from a R3 to a C4 to allow future development. The location is 4,600 MacArthur Drive, North Little Rock, Arkansas, are the applicants here?
I'm John Gentry, I live at 48 Taylor Park Loop, North Little Rock, I'm sorry, Little Rock, Arkansas, 72211.
Okay, and what are you wanting to do?
Well, we are rezoning two lots there that were zoned commercial, I'm sorry, residential, that we want to zone commercial so we can complete the building project there. We're building a Honda motorcycle marine business in that lot.
Do we have any comments from the commissioners?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I see where you're building the new facility on the west part of the lot, and I see the car wash, what's the use of the building in the middle?
The building in the middle is for the same thing, we've been remodeling that. It will house different vendors. We will have Honda and, I'm sorry, Yamaha and Triumph motorcycles and side-by-sides four-wheelers there. Honda requires a separate building, and it's, it's basically, it's labeled a powerhouse facility. There's, there will be four in the state, will be one of them.
Okay, but the one next door is your current facility, and that's, that's the one that'll sell multiple brands?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have any comments from the commissioners? Do we have any comments from the audience? Do we have a motion?
Hold on.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, would you please call the roll?
Thanks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
And Chairman White?
Yes. It did pass, if you'll just get with her tomorrow. Alright. Is this you? Item five.
That's me.
Alright, Mr. Chambers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the next few items are five through eight are design review. The first item is item five, SD 2025-52, massive edition, lot one, preliminary plat and site plan review for a new church at 6910 D Waffle Baker Lane. Advocate was present, agreed items one through 12 in subsections, and the design review committee recommends approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any comments? Is the applicant here? Would you come up front, sir?
Philip Lewis, Philip Lewis Engineering, representing the church. We've gone through the comments, I think we've already corrected them, gotten the drawings back in, so we had no issues with any of those, so.
Alright, any comments from the commissioners? Any comments from the audience? Do we have a motion?
I thought I seconded.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You can second it.
Well, I thought I did.
I heard it.
I'm kind of a weirdo here lately.
Let me write a note now. So, uh, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You passed. Okay, thank y'all very much.
Item six is SD 2025-53, dream big commercial edition, lot two, site plan review for a new grocery store located in Maumell Boulevard, west of Countess Massey Road. Advocate was present, agreed items one through 10 in subsections, design review recommends approval.
Second.
I think I heard her that time. Me too. Is applicant here? Please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Brandon Harp, 10820 Sunset Office Park, St. Louis, Missouri, 63127. Here tonight on behalf of Aldi, we're proposing a plus or minus 20,000 square foot grocery store at the northwest corner of Maumell and Count Massey, 97 parking spaces, and we had the design review committee meeting where it was approved. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Is it a lot like the one in Sherwood?
Yes, exactly.
Looks good.
Yep, that just opened a couple weeks ago.
Do we have any comments from the commissioners? Do we have any comments from the audience? So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed.
Item seven is SD 2025-54, Richardson Commercial Edition, lots one through eight, preliminary plat located on East McCain Boulevard, west of Forrester Road. Advocate was present, agreed items one through 11 in subsections, the design review committee recommended approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, is the applicant here?
Chairman, I'm Tim Daters with White Daters and Associates, representing Richardson Properties in the project. I'm sorry, Donna, I'm Tim Daters with White Daters and Associates. I'm here representing Richardson Properties on this project.
Alright, so do we have any questions?
I'm just happy to see that parcel developed.
Yes.
Do we have any other comments? Do we have any comments from the audience? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You passed.
Thank you all.
SD 2025-55, Cooper Square Edition, lot one, RR, site plan review for an eight bay auto repair shop at 11601 Maumell Boulevard. Advocate was present, agreed items one through 10 in subsections, the design review committee recommends approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is the applicant here?
Jacob White with Joe White and Associates, 25 Rowling Circle, Little Rock.
Thank you.
So we'd like to construct a auto body, or auto repair shop, and auto repair and tire shop, sorry.
Alright, do we have any questions or concerns?
You're going to tear down grandpa's?
Yes, sir.
Oh, man.
They're moving somewhere else, though.
Yeah, it's going to be positive. It'll come to North Little Rock. It needed to redo.
Alright, do we have any other comments from anyone?
Nobody in the audience.
Nobody in the audience? We got one in the corner right there. Well, he's, he still counts, he has a public voice. I know. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Or any opposed?
Thank y'all.
You passed, so now's the public comment, would you like to comment now?
Turn.
I just have one, one item. Usually, design review committees, a week after this meeting, it's tomorrow, because we were a week late, so just remind everybody for design review is tomorrow at 2:00. That was it?
In the lunchroom.
In the lunchroom.
You know, at our, our last meeting, kind of contentious review about North Shore Business Park and, you know, the medical facilities going out there, has the C received the traffic study?
So the, yes, so the answer to your question is yes, and it said, as it is right now, there's ratings, and it was like a C?
A through F.
A D?
It was a D rating, which is acceptable, but any more construction is, will throw it over that rating.
Now, more construction included this project or excluded this project?
This project has been approved. So, so, so the Ortho Arkansas has approved, and they issued, they've submitted for a building permit.
Yeah, I remember the fire marshal, in his comments, said it's approved, but this was the last one, kind of.
Yeah, so, so we're, the, the rule is still there that it, it, we exceeded the capacity for number of vehicles.
Did the traffic study give any recommendations of how to permanently fix this problem?
No.
What? What'd we pay him for? Come on.
We didn't pay for it, that was the thing.
That was Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Or the applicant?
Yes.
The, I do want to point out, Mr. Pfeiffer had a point, that even if they build a road from the back of North Shore out to Crystal Hill, all that traffic is still going to go to this intersection.
That's correct.
Well, I think the conversation was a need to engage the highway department in that same discussion. I agree with you.
Yeah, so, so he, he, Mr. Pfeiffer is meeting with everybody, and is, is going to come back with a plan, and meet with the mayor, and the traffic engineer and everything, to, and come back with a plan.
He should be a great.
So, at, at the moment, there's not a plan, there's just, we know that there's a need.
Will it come to this, will it come to this commission as part of the master plan?
Well, it just matters what it is. Again, we don't, we don't know what it is, so if, if it's a new street and adding, updating the master street plan, yes, it'll come back through us, but if it's widening an existing street or something, it's.
Or if it's all highway department.
Or, yeah, so, so it's, we don't know yet.
Just to clarify something for me, this could come up tomorrow. If a business is on a state highway, and they're asking for variance on street improvements, sidewalks, street trees, blah, 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 it, because on a state highway, those are automatically granted? Or they, we have to grant, or the city council?
We have an ordinance, and that, that road is inside the city limits, and so they would need to ask for a waiver of it. And their, and their argument to city council for that waiver might be, the highway department doesn't want it. But, but we, we have an ordinance that it's, if you're in the city limits, you got to meet these, these requirements, so.
Okay, thank you.
Was the conversation with the school, was it successful?
They're, they're open to it, but they don't want to spend any money. So, so it's, it's all coming down to who's, who's going to pay for something.
Right.
So, so, but yes, there was a couple meetings with the school district already, and they're, you know, and they're, they're concerned also, so, so. So so that's going to be part of the big plan of figuring out the traffic for the school. And then what, you know, then if there's more construction out there in the future, what, you know, what are we going to do? So find out.
So does anybody else have any comments? We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.